We have someone who's going to speak to us about the law, Jason Millsap.
Can you hear me? Hello, folks?
Nope.
Okay, I'll talk loud if I can. If I can't hear me, raise hand, please. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Jason Millsap. So I'm here tonight because I live in the county and I'm also the chairman of the Montgomery County Young Republicans. If you didn't know, the Montgomery County Young Republicans passed a very similar resolution to what you are about to take up here in a little bit. And so I wanted to let you know that the YRs have passed that resolution. Ours has a little more substance to it as far as some intricacies of the contracts and things that y'all may hear tonight. So I wanted to talk a little bit about that. In my day job, I am the chief of staff for the Texas House of Representatives, House District 15, which is the southern portion of Montgomery County. And I live up here in North County. So I have two sides of the county I represent from one living and where I work. So I have reviewed the TechStop contracts that we had in place for the flyovers at Highway 242 that were signed in 2005. And then right after that, voters approved a road bond in '05 in September that would start, basically kick-start the pass-through toll program that Montgomery County kind of spearheaded with TechStop back then. The word toll and pass-through toll is not really a toll like you and I think of it. It's basically the state paying us back, the county, for every mile of road that we built under this agreement, for every car that drove on that mile, seven cents. And so a lot of roads are on that, 1488, 1314, 1486, 1484, and the flyover at 242. So people go, well, how did the flyovers at 242 get paid off so quickly? They were part of the pass-through program. So for every car that went on it, that car paid a toll. That was from us. And then the state paid seven cents per lane mile on top of that. The state has paid all of its pass-through money for those projects off. We got the last payment last year. And Commissioners Court approved the final payment to go towards defeesing that debt in 2000, earlier this year in January of this year. So all the pass-through projects are now paid for, including the flyovers. Those contracts, as you go into them, have a very interesting point. Section 16 has a termination clause. That termination clause states that once the tolls, or excuse me, once the TechStop has fulfilled its obligation to pay us back, the contract is then voided. It has a stipulation there, subsection C, that says, as long as we continue to charge tolls on any component of the pass-through program, then we have certain obligations. One of those obligations was that we should build a third flyover in 2000, at the 242 intersection. That amendment to the original contract was done in 2010. In 2010, we made that agreement, we made that motion, we made that amendment to the original contract to take 100% of the cost of the third flyover. That's a really crappy deal for Montgomery County. And here's why. Under Texas law, the state pays 80% of any project on a state road. The county pays 20%. So we've basically said, you let us toll this bridge, and we'll pay 100% of the $12.5 million of the cost of the third flyover. When this agreement was made, we hadn't even started construction on the first bridge. So we had no idea or timeline on when we're going to build the third. The third flyover, if we borrowed the money, $12.5 million in 2010's numbers, which is probably more, it would have a payoff of about 25 years on the current usage of the flyovers. If we were in the tolls, that part of the contract also becomes void, which then allows us to go to the table with TechStop and negotiate with TechStop for the 80% funds matching for that project. But we haven't done that because we're operating on the assumption that we have this contract in place, which we do. But it becomes void the moment the county says, no more tolls on these two bridges. And then we can get state money. At the current estimated cost, which was the most recent one in 2010, the cost of the project was $12.5 million. 80% of that is $9.5 million bucks that the state is avoiding paying by us tolling the two bridges and continuing to toll the two bridges. That's why I said it's a crummy deal for Montgomery County. So YR resolution basically states that we should end this whole project because it's a form of double taxation that would allow Commissioners Court to then renegotiate with TechStop to get some state matching funds and would allow us to save county tax dollars and make these bridges free, which if you are in that area of 242, 85,000 cars a day go through that intersection, and only about 7,000 cars use the two bridges. If you sit there at 5:00 in the afternoon, cars go past the bridge, sit at the three red lights, they don't use the bridge. In the morning, when everybody's in a hurry to get to work, the flyover bridge, it has no red light at the end of it from east county on to south of 45, you can sit there and watch the traffic back up over the railroad bridge because no one wants to take the toll flyover. If it's free, it will alleviate traffic at that intersection like it was originally designed to do. So there's several components to this. I won't take up any more time because I'm sure a lot of people are ready to go home with your tolls today. So I'll be around as a resource if it's necessary as you guys get into it. Yes, ma'am?
I just have one question. Why is it so important to do this now and not like till after the election?
So it just come out. Unfortunately, the timing of it's kind of bad. One, Commissioners Court just voted to defees the debt on these projects in January, so very recently. And so the question, if I understand it, why is it so important? It became a political question at an open forum about a week or two after the bond debt was paid off. And the answer from several candidates was kind of interesting. So I don't push that. As a YR, I don't have control as the chairman of what that board does. Several board members came together and said, we would like to take up a resolution. They did it on their own. Once it passed that committee, then it came to the full executive board, which then I control. And we passed it unanimously. So, yes, ma'am?
But still, exactly, I need some timeframe because I feel like we've come up here and we were just here four weeks ago. Why couldn't we have voted on this four weeks ago? Why is it now, or why can't we vote on it in three, in five more weeks, whenever we want to?
So that's a question you guys are going to have to discuss. I would say, just on the timing, I don't think four weeks ago, it was made very clear that that vote at Commissioners Court paid off this debt.
When did Commissioners Court finish, is my question?
Yeah, I think it was January 8th.
Okay, so we had already, we didn't meet yet. So I'm thinking we should have brought this up.
Yeah. So, but that's, I'm not a precinct chair, so that's something you guys would have talked about. Mr. Brady, yes, sir?
Two questions. Number one, who signed the pass-through agreement back in '05? And who signed the memorandum of understanding between the Texas Department of Transportation, TechStop, and the Texas Administration Division offices in January 12?
No, I mean, 10?
What I have is...
So the original contract was signed by Barb Sadler, former county judge, with authorization from all four of the commissioners at that time. Under today's Commissioners Court attendance, only two commissioners remain that were there at the time. That's Mike Metter and now County Judge Craig Doyle. The rest of them were not on the court at that time. The amendment that you referred to that added the financing portion of the third flyover at 100% cost of the county was also signed by Judge Sadler after a motion was made by Commissioner Ed Chance and seconded by Mike Metter and then voted on by the four commissioners at that time, Ed Reinhardt and Craig Doyle. So it was done prior.
Excellent clarification. Second question is, what's your resolution pass? Where did that resolution go?
I forwarded that resolution to Chairman Dr. Waldroperson.
And then where does it go?
It's up to the chairman. So we have issued a press release. Unfortunately, not all of our local media has taken that press release and ran with it. So, and that's fine. You know, the Young Republicans aren't known for passing resolutions. We've only done two of them, and this is the second. The first one was on reappraisals after Hurricane Harvey.
Thank you. We need to call this to order. Thank y'all.
I'll sit around.
Ladies and gentlemen, do y'all want my Commissioner Clark to speak before we call the meeting to order? He can answer some of your questions.
Yes. Basically, some of this, the timing of this has been called into issue. Well, the timing of, you know, it's the political season. So should we stop doing business? Should we stop, should we start doing what's right? You know, it's been very clear, with exception of Commissioner Noack, regarding the point that I did vote to put the tolls on the road. I will tell you that this whole deal happened before I got here. The deal was already cut. The deal was already done. The contract was in place. Basically, my vote was to set the tolls. Now here I am, brand-new commissioner came in. The deal with the toll road's already cut. It was just, what I voted for was the lowest amount, I thought, you know, 50 cents or a quarter, whatever we could get the lowest amount. And we voted on that at that time. So I'm not going to say that I didn't vote to toll it. But what I am telling you is when a toll road gets paid for, it's time to stop taxing the people. And I'm telling you, what Jason said is absolutely true about the contract. We went over this contract. And I was made aware that, you know, I saw y'all's resolution. I'm in full support. I appreciate y'all. I feel like getting behind me and getting these tolls removed off of there. You know, people are saying, well, what about the third flyover? What about this? What about that? Well, what about a lot of things? You know, are we going to just sit around and say, let's wait, let's wait, let's just keep putting the tolls on there? I can assure you that I have a plan in place. I'm going to go meet with TechStop as soon as the election's over. Things are a little crazy right now. But I am going to go down and meet with TechStop, and we are going to move forward with a plan for the third flyover. And it's not going to have anything to do, it's going to be more akin to what Jason's talking about. The state needs to pay 80%. We need to pay 20%. We need to move forward. And I'm in favor of the resolution as it's been written. Okay?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Let's talk to the committee and get on. Come to order. And we'll have our invocation. Captain Tom Hughes.
Father, we just thank you so very, very much for this day, Lord. And I pray a special blessing on each and every person here and their families. And Father, may the decisions we make here tonight bring honor and glory to you. And we pray this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Normally, our bylaws call for, when we have a debate, two for and two against. And each one is limited to two minutes. Unless there is objection, I would recommend that we put a 15-minute limit on both sides. And as many speakers as want to can speak and use that 15 minutes. And if there's objection...
Objection.
You object?
I do object.
And then we'll need a motion to suspend the rule so that we can expand the debate time. Is there a motion? Here or none? Okay. Okay.
Two for, two against, two minutes, see, for each person on each side.
There's going to be first to speak.
Should I present the resolution first?
Yeah. Because that would counter your, you counter against the two minutes. Okay. All right, go ahead. Okay, you just read the resolution. I can't say anything else. That's my fault.
All right. Whereas, the Republican Party of Texas platform states that we believe the tolls should come off the road when the debt is retired, plank 211. Whereas, tolling a highway after the road has been paid for constitutes double taxation since the citizens were taxed first to build it and then taxed again in the form of a toll. Whereas, the bond debt from the construction of the 242 flyover toll road has been entirely defeased by pass-through toll revenue from the state, largely due to the efforts of County Commissioner James Noack. Whereas, since the 242 flyover has been paid off, it is unfair to require the taxpayers to continue paying for it. Whereas, County Commissioner Jim Clark has called for Commissioners Court to remove the tolls on the 242 flyover, which cost the taxpayers over $1 million a year. Whereas, opposing the toll roads will bring more people into the Republican Party due to the deep unpopularity of tolls with the majority of Texans. Whereas, tolls are an important issue which are not only opposed by the RPT platform, but were also a big enough issue to be placed on the 2018 primary ballot by the SREC. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Republican Executive Committee of Montgomery County, Texas, that we call upon the Montgomery County Commissioners Court to remove the tolls on the 242 flyover and end the double taxation of Montgomery County citizens. Mr. Chairman, I move with option.
Your second?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the resolution as presented.
Okay, you want to come forward and state your amendment?
I'll give a second for that.
Second.
Then you can second your amendment after you've...
Pardon me?
After you. Somebody can second your amendment after it's been presented.
I have some copies if you guys want to pass them back. I propose that the resolution be amended, the paragraph that starts "now therefore", that it read "now therefore, be it resolved by the Republican Executive Committee of Montgomery County, Texas, that we call upon the Montgomery County Commissioners Court to remove the tolls on the 242 flyover once Montgomery County's written agreements with the Federal Highway Administration, Texas Division, and TechStop have been fulfilled and end the double taxation of Montgomery County citizens.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. We'll now go to the debate. And we'll have two speakers for and two speakers against, each for two minutes.
And we're debating the amendment.
We're debating the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Charlie Royd, Precinct 38. And the only reason we want to amend this language is because, as you heard from Jason over here, these agreements are in place. The first one, the pass-through agreement, has been on the books since 2005. It's still a current and active pass-through agreement. The memorandum of understanding between these agencies came on in 2010. It's been amended twice. Once again, it's still on the books. It's, so if we're going to pass a resolution to have these tolls come off at one point in time, I don't think you can just throw away any existing agreements. I think we have to at least acknowledge that these agreements are in writing. They've been signed off by the appropriate authorities. And when you look back at the original pass-through agreement in 2005, this was a bond issue that was passed by the voters. It wasn't just a group of people sitting up at Commissioners Court and said, hey, let's just go do this. I mean, they did it, but then it goes to the people and it's voted on in. So in one way, if you throw all of that stuff out, you're actually doing away with the will of the people. And I don't think as an elected group, that's our job is to get rid of, you know, and start doing our own thing just because we don't like something. So let's just honor the will of the voters. Let's honor the written agreement and vote for the amendment to the resolution. Thank you.
Ballot again.
I'm speaking for the amendment. Do you want someone against first, or?
No.
So Jason referenced the agreements. Some of them are here. It's not all of it. You're welcome to look at it if you'd like. I passed out attachment A1. This is, I think, what Jason referred to. Scope of the project is the local government. That's Montgomery County will fund and develop the eastbound flyover. Local government will pay 100%. At that time, when this was done, the estimated participation was over $12 million. Whether you like toll roads, you don't like toll roads, et cetera, I think the issue is, is that we should not be asking our county government to reneg on written agreements that are in place. I think that's a bad policy for this body to recommend something like that. And I personally believe that if the funding mechanism is not there to do that flyover, that eastbound flyover, it's going to be many, many years. Maybe we can go back to TechStop. Maybe we can get the 80% that Jason or Commissioner Clark were referring to. Maybe we can't. We don't know that right now. The tolls are a funding mechanism for the eastbound flyover. As the current plan, it's always been the plan. I don't think that's anything new. So I'm just recommending that our resolution tell Commissioners Court that we want them to honor the written agreements that are in place at this time. Thank you.
Again?
Yes, I would like to speak against this amendment as author of this resolution. What this amendment does is basically gut this entire resolution and really defeats the purpose of even passing this. Because what we're wanting to do is send a message to the county commissioners that we support the Republican Party platform. We believe that the tolls should come off once the road's been paid for. And so we are taking the platform that was passed by our delegates at the convention, the largest gathering of Republicans probably in the country at a state level. And, you know, we're applying what they want. As far as the contract, it says in the contract, and as Jason just related earlier, we can end this agreement. And TechStop, in that case, will pull matching funding from them. They'll pay for 80%, and the county will pay for 20%. Whereas if we keep on going through this, we're going to pay 100%. This is a bad, bad deal. And why this deal was struck in the first place, I have no idea. But we're not bound to this. And finally, as far as the voters are concerned, yes, they did pass that, and the toll was put on there, but the toll has been paid for. And so there's no reason why the toll shouldn't come off now. And there's no reason why we should have to continue to pay 100% of the cost of this road. We could pay 20%. TechStop could pay 80%. So I'm opposed to this. You know, we pass this, this will give the legal room, and it deletes the entire point of passing this resolution. So I'm opposed.
Another again?
My name is Brian Crumbie. I'm from Precinct 13. I am against this amended language, as was mentioned. It does kind of gut the spirit of the bill. There was a comment made that the will of the people, the will of people is not to be double taxed, in my opinion. So I don't think we're reneging on the will of the people of some previous. Taxpayers do not want to be told, but don't want to be taxed and taxed and taxed. I thought we were the party of low taxes, and so that's one thing I said. So I'm not, I'm a little confused on the support from some of the speakers on this, you know, why they would want to continue this taxation on us when it's clearly given by several people, how to make it cheaper for us. And so I ask you to vote this amendment down so that we can get back to the main language and do what we're here for. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do we have any time remaining?
No.
Each of us had the two minutes.
Two for, two against, and two minutes, please.
And we used it up long? I'm sorry?
It's two for, two against, up to two minutes.
Oh, up to two minutes.
We have a schedule of two minutes.
Are we allowed to ask questions? Why?
It's all mandatory procedure.
We do, it's all mandatory procedure.
Now we have to vote.
Chairman, I would like to make a motion...
Point of information.
...for a secret ballot.
Repeat that.
I would like to make the motion that we do a secret ballot because the recording device is in the road.
Is there any objection?
Objection.
It requires a second.
A second.
No debate. Is there a second?
I second.
Point of order, where in the bylaws does it say that there's no debate on that motion?
This is Robert's rules of order. The bylaws doesn't prescribe it. Robert's rule says a motion can be made, and if it's seconded, there's no debate. It proceeds to vote on whether or not to have a secret ballot.
Where does it say in Robert's rules that there's no debate on that?
Point of interest?
Mr. Chairman?
It's on page 284.
Mr. Chairman, point of order?
What's your point of order?
A point of order, Robert's rule says that any member could call for a division of the House or a standing count. Any member, not a vote, any member. So I call for that vote, standing count.
Point of information?
There are any motion of warrants and secondes.
It has to be disposed of.
So we have to vote now on whether to have a secret ballot?
Point of information?
Yes.
I would like to know why we have to do this tonight. I do not understand that.
Exactly.
And so that, I understand, and I agree that at some point in time, those tolls need to come off, okay?
Point of, point of, point of order.
I am talking, I am talking of order.
That's a speech. That's another speech.
I don't understand why we have to make a decision on this tonight. I would like to understand that.
I'm sorry. That's not following the legislation. Okay. All right. Yes.
Point of information, can I request, what was the timeframe? How long did it take to pay off the debt from when this, we started tolling to now?
Would it be out of order for me to answer that?
We have a motion and a second.
I'm out of order.
We have a motion and a second. We need to finish that business, then we can move forward.
Okay. Where do you go, motion on the second place?
We have a motion for it, secret ballot, and it was seconded. So we need to dispose with that business. I know Mr. Crumbie asked for division, but the motion was, it was asked for and seconded before he called division. Then we'll come back to your division.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
If secret ballot fails, we'll come back and do division.
What's your point of order?
Our point of order is, if one person wants a standing count, the vote is meaningless because that would trump any vote on having a secret ballot. I can show you the page.
The motion was made and seconded. We just, it's not a bail. We just proceed to vote on whether or not to have a secret ballot. If it fails, it's a draw to your motion.
Do you have a rule on this issue? You gave me advice. Are you going to rule?
I'm sorry. I didn't understand.
Are you going to rule on whether my point of order is valid or not?
The point of order is ruling, and I'll support that.
Okay.
So now we're going to vote on whether to have a secret ballot. And all those in favor, please stand.
16 for.
All the votes, 26 for.
24 against. 16.
Donnie, you sit over there. You're hiding out over there.
16 for, 24 against. Motion fails.
Okay, motion fails. Okay, now we're going to vote on the amendment to the resolution. All those in favor of the amendment to the resolution? All those in favor of, of the res-, the amendment to the resolution, please stand.
Seventeen twenty-six.
What?
Seventeen for, twenty-six against. Couple people didn't vote in the last.
Okay. Motion, motion, approve the amendment, fail. Now we go to the original motion on the resolution. All those in favor, please stand.
Yeah.
I'm ready to go on. Be hard to hear. I'll say your, your form.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, I'm John Wertz, President of Chair 69. The Republican Party of Texas, Plank Number 211, states, "We believe tolls should be removed when the debt on the road is retired." Bond debt associated with flyovers on I-45 and State Highway 242 was defeased last month. Continuing to charge a toll for the use of the flyovers now constitutes a form of double taxation. Removing the toll component from the flyovers would allow Montgomery County to execute the termination clause of the contract between the county and the Texas, Texas Department of Transportation. This would allow for state matching funds for a third flyover and potentially save the taxpayers of Montgomery County an estimated $9.6 million in construction costs. Additionally, this would save the taxpayers of Montgomery County over $1.2 million in double taxation per year. I urge you to support this resolution to remove the tolls or tax. Thank you.
Number Speaker, either for or against.
I'm for.
You're for?
Yes.
Okay. You have two minutes.
I'm Larry Rogers, Precinct Chair 75. I live in Windsor Hills, 242 west of, uh, I-45. Uh, we're living in a retirement community, uh, right where the tollway, the flyover bridge ends. There's another retirement community in that same area right there. It's called Windsor Lakes. There's approximately 750 homes in those two subdivisions, and about 1,200 to 1,500 people. Uh, then you throw on top of that, Lone Star College, where it ends the toll road again. Uh, and then right across the street from there is, on 242, is College Park High School. Practically everyone in that area that uses 242, not the toll road, uh, is on a fixed income. So it's very, uh, very hard to financially use the toll road as much as we'd like to. So, the, why should we continue to have a toll? There's no reason for it. The traffic, all the people that live on 242 and in that area that I'm speaking of, when we go to the woodlands, we take the service road. Obviously, we get up on I-45. When we come back, we have to take the service road if we're not going to take the toll road. And the, the traffic is horrendous. So it would be a big, big advantage to not use the toll so we could use it free. Thank you.
I find myself in an unusual and awkward position this evening. Number one, I, I do have a, a lot of questions about why this had to happen tonight as an emergency, which is clearly not an emergency.
Are you for or against it?
Can I speak, or? Okay, it's my turn to speak. The agreement, the contract that is in place currently says, in Part 12, I'm Scott Baker, Precinct 23, I'm going to say, toll revenues, Section 12, toll revenues, Page 7 of 12. The developer may not impose tolls on the project unless the department and the developer have first executed a written agreement providing for the imposition of tolls. If the developer receives any revenue from tolls imposed on any part of the project, those toll revenues must be used to retire debt incurred in connection with the project, must be used to pay for the operation and maintenance of the project, or must be devoted to other highway improvements that have been selected by agreement of the parties and are eligible for development under Title 23 of the United States Code. The expenditure of toll revenues must comply with all applicable state and federal laws. Couple other sentences. Uh, there is a second agreement in place to fund the flyover on the eastbound side. The funds are built into that agreement through the tolls. I agree 100% that these tolls should go away as soon as possible. But there is no more conservative position than for the people who are using the road to pay for the road. And the simple fact is, there's a funding mechanism built in right now to pay for the eastbound flyover with tolls in place as agreed. And I don't know what magic pot you think the state has to take money from, but that is also taxpayer-funded money. That comes out of our pocket. It's just a different bucket. There's not a magic pot that it comes out of. I don't know what the, why that's difficult to understand. I agree 100% we must remove the tolls as soon as possible, but there is funding for a flyover. The amendment made sense because it said, "Keep it in place until we finish paying for the other $12 million project."
Number Speaker, again?
Plank in State, Precinct 6. I'm not opposed to the resolution based on the merits of the resolution. I'm opposed to this because I just left my family, my wife, my daughter, and my son while they were watching a softball game. I could be enjoying that game with them. Instead, I'm here, voting on a, on a resolution that could have waited. If you want to become a mouthpiece for minority of our precinct chairs, then vote for it. But if you want to stand up and say, "We're in power of, of being used by minority," please vote against.
It's two for and it's two against.
How much time do they have left?
None. It's two people.
Okay, that concludes the debate, and now we get to vote on the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, do we have a forum?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. What's wrong?
Are you ready for the vote?
Yeah.
All in favor of the resolution, please stand.
Don't tell us if we don't win the argument.
All, all the phones, all the phones, please stand. Three quarters.
Thirty-four, thirteen against.
Thirty-four for, thirteen again. Motion is adopted. The meeting is adjourned.